February Springdale Planning Commission meeting. Before we get started here, I hope you'll join me in our pledge of allegiance and an invocation led by Dale Tyler. We'll call our meeting to order and with that, we'll do a roll call.
Howard Austin.
Here.
Ray Cardiel. Mark Cloud.
Here.
Gary Compton.
Here.
Brent Couch.
Here.
Chris Hussein.
Here.
Jennifer Keith.
Here.
Teresa Reynolds.
Here.
Dale Tyler.
Here.
I would entertain a motion at this time to approve our minutes from January of 24. We'd take a motion in a second if we could right now.
So moved.
Second?
No.
Hussein? Second?
Second.
All right.
Is this all in favor?
All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? That passes unanimously. At this time, we need to do an election of officers. We do that every year at this time. And I would entertain a motion for a slate of officers if we choose to be presented at this time.
Let me kind of talk to you about that for just a second. Teresa, we want to welcome you and Jennifer to our body. We thank you for volunteering your time to come and serve on this group with us. I would like to propose the following slate of officers. As chairman, Gary Compton. Vice chairman, Mark Cloud. And secretary Dale Tyler. This kind of stays in like we've been doing. You move up from vice chairman to chairman and we kind of cycle through that direction. If anybody has any questions or the nominations, we'd be glad to take those at this time.
Motion by Chris Hussein. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Brent. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you. I'd be remiss if I didn't say thanks to our former chairman Shannon Muller and Peyton Parker who also served on this commission. They did great work in the time that they were here. They always had the best interest and their heart was in it. I enjoyed working with them a great deal, but their absence now, I'd like to welcome Teresa Reynolds down on the far end. Welcome Teresa, we're glad that you are here. And Jennifer Keith, also down here, our two new planning commission members. So, thank you. We welcome you both. Thanks for being here. We have one tabled item on the agenda tonight and that is a rezone, R 2404. And that has been tabled tonight, so that will not be heard. We'll start the agenda with a tabled item from recently and this is Mside Fay, the Ribble Investment Company. And this is a variance and it's requested by Nathan Crouch of Blue &amp; Associates. Nathan?
Good evening, thank you. Nathan Crouch with Blue &amp; Associates. We're doing an informal plat for the client there on Shaver Street and in order to split up some of the, split some of the buildings away from each other so they can be sold individually. And with the front 50-foot setback existing, each of the lots has buildings encroaching into that setback. And so we're asking for a variance for encroachment into those setbacks. It's an existing condition.
We have three lots there already. We're just changing the configuration of the three lots?
Yes ma'am, no new lots are being created.
No new lots being created, just changing the line some. How long have those buildings been there, do you know?
I do not. They're, they're...
Many, many years.
They're not new, by any means.
Anybody else have any comments over there? Anybody? Fire? Okay.
Any comments from members of the audience in any way? That would come through the commission as a call for the vote.
I have a question, Pat. See, if we do this, if they tear a building down and build a new one, would they have to adhere to the new setbacks or is this for any future? I'm just curious.
The variance is being granted to the existing structures. The existing structure goes away, they would have to come back and ask for a new variance if they wanted to put it back on that same location.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote, Mark Cloud.
Austin?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Couch?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, thank you. The next section on the agenda is a public hearing. These are rezones or rezoning. The first one up tonight is R 2360 JP Specialty. And this comes from Will Kelstrom from Bates &amp; Associates.
Will Kelstrom here on behalf of the applicant JP Specialty. I am with Watkins, Boyer, Gray &amp; Curry. However, the engineer who is from Bates &amp; Associates is, there he is, he's also here to answer questions. So essentially what we are doing is we are, we have three proposals in front of y'all and really what it all boils down to is this, is that we have an existing building and we would like to use, or existing development, and we would like to use a unit on the end of that development for a golf cart dealership. It is a storage and warehouse type development. So the first component is a rezone to C5. The next is a variance for, or the next is a revision to the large scale and the last one is a variance for a reduction of parking spaces. So I think the C5 zoning is probably the easy part here. If you look on the map around it, it's more or less surrounded by C5 zonings. Notably, we've got Heartland Honda just to the south and we have Burton Pools and Spas kind of on the interstate and really a lot of the parcels around those are also zoned C5. So I think that's, that's the easy part here. The next is a large-scale revision to get us into the compliance, or get us into compliance with the requirements of C5. And the last one is a variance for the reduction of required parking spaces. So essentially, we have an existing development and at some point in the development, the applicant got involved in this golf cart dealership which has separate partners from the other development. It's not something he anticipated on the forefront and he realized that the unit on the end of this building could be good for a golf cart dealership. There's no bait and switch here, it's just kind of matter-of-factly how it happened. So what we're trying to do is get the building configured to where it can work with that. The variance for reduction from 37 to 22 spaces, really the rest of the uses in this development are not really parking-heavy. They're storage and warehouse uses, so it's not, it's not anticipated that there's going to be a lot of patrons or a lot of parking really other than customers of the golf cart dealership and the golf carts actually being parked for open display. So for that reason, I don't feel that the required number of parking is really going to be necessary to serve this development. And I think that we can pretty easily accomplish our needs with 22 spaces without any overflow. So with that, I'm here if you guys have any questions.
Ready for me?
Yeah, we'll, let's talk about the rezone first from C2 to C5.
Oh, did I skip ahead?
No. Okay, well, let me ask a question. Are you rezoning the warehouse portion of this building to C5 as well or just the parking lot in the front?
That's correct. Where you got it.
Okay.
So when we rezone this entire front to C5, whatever you consider to be the worst use
in that area, anything can go in that area right now, once we rezonate. They're talking about a golf cart dealership, but anything else that's allowed in that once we go to a C5, okay? I don't think the C5 itself is, is a problem. It would have been better had we discussed this at the front end when this project came through. It would have made it a lot easier to do. But a C5 zone, the land use plan calls for regional commercial use. The rezoning is in keeping with the following goals and policies. The comprehensive land use plan is recommended for approval. Improve the city's economic base and tax structure through the promotion of healthy, stable commercial concentrations. Encourage the development of a wide range of commercial developments for the residents and tourists to include neighborhood, community, and regional centers. And I guess my question is, why is the office space of this not included?
Again, the, there are, there are partners in common between both of these ventures. It's not, it's not the exact same entity or the exact same people, so I mean, I guess that's kind of one of the things that gets lost in there. I mean, if JP Specialty has an office in there and they're helping to manage the golf cart dealership from there, then...
Okay, are they going to assemble golf carts in there? Are they going to bring them already assembled, take them off the truck, and put them inside?
Assembly of golf carts is against the code. From what I understand, we're not allowed to be assembling them there. So if, I mean...
Okay, that's why I asked that question.
I'm, I will advise my client that it's not allowed. If we get busted, then presumably we're going to get in trouble, so I mean...
With that discussion at the very beginning, that the golf cart would come in a box, they would take it inside, they would put it together, and then they would have it for sale. That's not allowed in a C5.
And I could speak a little bit on that. We've got several of these types of developments going all through Northwest Arkansas right now. Next month, we have a 30,000 square foot warehouse where they're going to be doing the assembling and they're going to be shipping them already, ready to go to this location.
There is, the applicant has space that he owns where he can do it, not here. It's not as if he's, he's got a golf cart dealership and his entire global operation is right in this building. He's, he can assemble them in other places and he has been advised that he's not allowed to assemble them there.
Okay, I just put that on the record, just in case anybody asks that question in the future, okay?
Okay.
We're doing the rezoning first. That's the first item, 2360 on your agenda, from C2 to C5, and that would be a call for the vote.
I have a question.
Are there any comments from members of the audience on this issue? Hearing none, that comes to the commission. This would be a call for the vote.
I have a couple of questions for you. What are you going to, what's your intention for this warehouse? If it's not to assemble, what are you, what's the purpose of it?
This is Jake Chavis, Bates &amp; Associates. The intent is to kind of convert this type of warehouse to, to an indoor display area for his golf carts. To have pedestrians be able to kind of walk through aisles of rows of golf carts that can kind of pick and choose what they want.
And do, do we have different standards, commercial design standards for C5 with this portion of the building? Have to have different design standards or no?
No, the building meets commercial design standards. The question I'm going to have, is there any fire code or building code issues if we change of this use of this building, this store, golf carts inside?
The building's fully sprinkler and right now that's just the shelf space. It'll deal with anything that has to be done with it.
The issue becomes how do we display them outside? And what you're proposing is a very small area with very small spaces on it to put golf carts in it. Again, I'll say, once we rezonate this to C5, anything can be used at that location, not just rezoning it just for golf carts, okay?
Do we know how many parking spaces that we had originally?
So with, with this modification to our previously existing large-scale development, we are increasing the number of parking spaces by seven spaces.
Well, you're adding golf cart spaces.
So that's, we're adding, we're adding regular parking spaces as well. If you look at our, our modification there in the darker gray, up towards the front, the very smaller spaces there are the golf cart display area. We've got, I think I counted 10 or 11, I don't remember exactly. And then seven full-size car spaces to kind of help compensate a little bit for that variance that we're asking for, for the reduction of spaces.
Okay, so you're, you have 4,800 square feet of office space that requires 16 spaces. And you have 4,789 square feet of retail space which requires 24 spaces, which is a total of 40, but you're only providing 22.
That's correct.
So you're providing just two spaces over half of what the requirement is?
Yes, because we don't anticipate that, that much. I feel like our, our client owns several of these types of businesses. He can anticipate how much parking is actually going to need.
Okay, remember, parking spaces are not calculated based on what they think they need, but based on what the size of the structure is. And this is a pretty substantial variance to the number of parking spaces to adding in a use that wasn't previously approved at this location. Keep that in mind.
Are there any other questions or comments from the commission?
On these parking spaces and the golf cart dealership, is it a scenario like a car dealership where people are just going to come and go? Or is it going to be more of a come on an appointment, take a look and that kind of thing that allows you to manage traffic flow?
I think there's the ability to do both.
I would also say to the point earlier about it's possible that, so we're selling golf carts and we think we have enough room for that, that it's, it would technically be allowed if we wanted to sell boats here. I agree with Patsy's point, however, I would like to make the point that based on the amount of space we have available, if you did, if the golf cart dealership goes out and you did want to put a boat dealership in, it probably isn't a good spot for you because there's not enough room for the boats. So, I mean, there's only enough room for, there's only as, as much room as there is. And so if there's, you know, potentially bigger units being sold, bigger vehicles, anything like that, it's probably just not a good space for them and I doubt they would rent it.
So the golf carts will all be displayed indoors, not outdoors?
It'll be both.
Yeah, there's a, there's a small section just, just to the south of where the drive is, where the little bitty dashed marks are. That's, that's where that area is to display golf carts that we've set aside.
What size are those spaces? I mean, how many golf carts can you sit out there?
I don't remember what I, what I drew them at. They were the standard, standard golf cart-sized spaces, but I indicated they're on the plans. I think they're eight feet long by four feet wide is what it looks like.
I should know this, but is there a way to do this without rezoning? Could you do this as a variance to C2 or they have to go to C5 for this?
You can't allow a use by variance in any zoning district, so it'll have to be rezoned to allow this open display, this type of use in this structure.
If there are no questions, this would be a call for the vote on the rezone from C2 to C5.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Brent Couch.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Couch?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
That passes unanimously, thank you.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the 27th.
Okay. The next part of this would be 2403 on your agenda. This would be their variance request to scale back and reduce the parking spaces. This would also be a call for the vote unless there are other questions.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Mark Cloud.
Compton?
Yes.
Couch?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
That passes unanimously as well. And the last part of this agenda item is L 2368. This is the large scale which has been revised and this will be a motion subject to staff comments.
Okay, do we have any staff comments?
Planning just has standard comments since the variance and rezone passed.
Building inspection, have any? Engineering, have any?
No.
Any comments at all from members of the public? Any questions or comments from commissioners? If not, this is a call for the vote. Oops, I'm sorry. This is a motion subject to staff comments. We need a motion and a second.
Motion subject to staff comments.
Motion by Dale Tyler?
Second.
Couch?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cardiel? Oh, he's not here. Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously, thank you.
Thank you all.
All right. Next on the agenda is a rezone, 2405, Borean Properties, presented by Wayne Van Hook.
We are asking for the property to be rezoned from C5 to C2 for the use. It had been the C5, but we, Mr. Howerton has deceased and we, we're having to rent the building now. And we've talked to the, the planning and we need, probably for the business in there, we need to do C2.
The interesting part about this is we just talked about all the other areas around it being C5.
Yeah.
Now we're taking this back to C2. Is the purpose of this so that you can apply for a conditional use for auto sales?
What?
Are you looking to do an auto sales at this? Because we had this one at one, at one time.
No, it's just a shop. Yeah, we don't need open display or anything like that. So I thought, he said, he was saying we're all C5. We were just, we already had C2 filed for this one.
Okay.
No, it's to, it's to be the use, just as the shop and stuff, it's not, not auto sales.
Well, auto services and stuff, what's in there now, is something changing? Because it could stay in the C5, could it not? Auto services is allowed in a C5? Okay, that's why we're going back for the existing use.
That's why we need it, yes.
Again, the area is indicated on the land use plan as regional commercial and this is a step down. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies recommended for approval. Improve the city's economic, tax base and structure and encourage the development of a wide range of commercial development. They have to understand you're limiting your uses to it by going back to C2.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you. Any questions at all from the audience? Yes, sir. If you'd please state your name and your address.
Yeah, my name's Dela Loach. I actually live at 354 Angel Falls, Springdale, but I own 669 South 48th Street, which is right next door. I'm also the majority owner of Sunrise Developers. And I hate to be the bad guy here, but you know, I'm here to object. I was actually just going to see a architect about building the office building where we're at. A professional office building. We're going to have our offices in there. Just try to see how much square footage I can get on three-quarters of an acre and have appropriate parking. If I could go two stories, I wanted to do that and maybe have some professional offices in there. If you read the, the regulations on C2, it basically says they should be concentrated at intersections of arterial streets, which this is not. It says that extension of the district along arterial streets in linear fashion shall be discouraged. And that's exactly what he's trying to do, trying to come down the street because there's a tire shop that's next on the other side of him. The, if you look under automotive services, it says automobile service stations can be significantly objectionable to nearby uses. Therefore, such establishments shall be allowed only in districts where necessary to provide its use. I think there's plenty of places in Springdale that, you know, we can have automotive shops. I don't think there's any need to have one there. I think it goes against the code and, and I can tell you that if it's there, I'm not going to build my office building next to it. I can show you pictures. I should have taken copies of them, but I mean, it's a, in the back of it, it's pretty much an eyesore. And especially if I go two stories, you're going to be looking right down on that. I think, you know, we have a hospital at the other end of 48th Street. I think coming down 48th Street's a good place for medical offices and different things like that. I think that, that this use and, and coming down 48th Street with like automotive is, you know, it's going to set the tone on what happens all down that 48th Street. So I don't, I don't think we should allow it to continue to sprawl down there. I can tell you that I won't be building my office building there if it's next door.
Thank you. Any questions at all from the commissioners? This would be a call for the vote.
This is an auto service, currently, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
And it's operating as a non-conforming use of that location. It's been there a long time.
Yeah.
I think we've got another question from a member in the audience. Would you come?
It's been there for a long time. It was a hair salon for a long time, that's why it's set on there. And then, you know, we didn't even realize it was back there until we had our lot all cleaned up and had the, all the bushes trimmed and everything else. And then all of a sudden, and if you want me to show you the picture, I can show you the picture.
I think it had a barber shop in the front and the back part was automotive services and it's been that way for several years.
Well, we never knew what was going on back there, quite frankly.
Yeah, there was some discussion and that's why I asked about putting in an auto sales and that was denied and not allowed, C6. The property just to the south of it where the tire shop is zoned C2, right now, so...
Yeah, and the tire shop, you know, it basically, where it's shoved is a really odd-shaped lot. There wasn't a whole lot you could do with that. It's got the freeway all behind it. I mean, that was kind of, I think, a totally different situation. Like I said, I think the regulations say that you shouldn't allow it to sprawl down linear down the street. And, you know, I, we planned on building anywhere from 5,000 to 10,000, 15,000 square feet if we can fit it on that lot of a, you know, nice professional building. And I think that's a way better use for that street.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wayne, is there a reason why they can't continue to operate they have with their conditional use at?
Excuse me?
Is there a reason why they can't continue to operate as a non-conforming use there? Or are we trying to do something different with it too?
Well, no, we're just trying to get in conformity after we've been in non-conforming use.
So it would be a permitted use rather than a non-conforming use? Okay.
Yes, yes ma'am. Can you come forward to the microphone? If you could state your name and address?
Okay, Kathy Howerton, 218, I'm sorry, Kathy Howerton, 218 Pinkley Road, Elm Springs, Arkansas. And this was actually the shop that my husband used. He passed away, but he rented it after he retired. That was three, three and a half years ago. And so we were renting to this automotive place and found out they wanted to do sales and that's why they tried to do a rezone, but then they found out they couldn't do that because that didn't fit the use of the space. So they said that they would do just repair only. Now they have since then added a privacy fence. And I have talked to them about it as far as keeping the place neat around there. So behind the privacy fence is where the vehicles are kept that he was referring to. But also we are considering renting this to a roofing, a roofing, Precision Roofing and Exteriors and that C2 should also fit their use. And as it was mentioned, I had asked and was told that R and R is also C2, right there by it.
And it is, but if you were putting in a roofing company, that's allowed in a C5. You wouldn't have to rezonate down to a C2 if that's what you're changing it to is for that and they could remain as a non-conforming use.
Right. Well, I didn't originally want to go down, but for auto repair, we were either going to, we were going to have to go down. So that was the only reason I was going to go ahead and go down because it could work for either business.
Well, it could, but what I'm saying is the existing business that you rent to could stay as a non-conforming if you stay at C5. You just couldn't put another automotive repair place in there if they moved out.
I don't think I even knew that it could be a non-conforming business.
It already is a non-conforming business. Because when you rezoned it to C5, that made it a non-conforming business. They came in and asked for a C6 and that was denied.
Right.
And they stayed at C5 because they couldn't sell automotive, they, we didn't rezonate so they could have automotive sales to go with it. So they remained a non-conforming use in the C5.
So they would then be allowed to put up an automotive sign as a non-conforming business?
Well, it depends on the size of the sign and where they want to put it.
Right, but I mean, they're allowed to put a sign up and, and be in conformance and compliance?
They're, they're recognized as a non-conforming use of that. They can't expand it without the planning commission approving it. the planning commission approving it. They never can expand it more than 30%. And it can't be transferred to someone else.
Okay, as an automotive business?
Correct.
Is what you're saying.
Yeah, the existing business can stay in operation as long as they meet the standards she just spoke of. If they decide not to go there again, then you cannot put another auto service without coming back to the planning commission, getting a nonconforming use again.
To go down to a C2.
Or you can change it, but it could stay at a C5. You can put something else that already qualifies for a C5 in that, in that place, which according to Patsy, the roofing company would qualify, if that's what you're thinking.
Okay. I'm not sure which of these businesses we're gonna have there. And so I was trying to make sure that it would work for either one. And that's why, since they tried the rezone before to do auto sales.
So the existing business can stay as it is until they decide to leave or you decide not to renew their lease.
Okay. I'm sure then how to proceed from here.
Yeah, it just, but you couldn't, you couldn't put another automotive business in there, is what they're telling you. But what about if, if the roofing company was to rent it, is it acceptable in C2?
It's a permitted use in C2 and C5.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Whichever you want to do.
I'd just like to add that it's a little less objectionable to be if it stays like right where it's at, like you're saying, just as a nonconforming use. I mean, one of the main concerns too is that that whole lot becomes a, you know, car, car repair place and you have cars all over the place. You know, but right now they have it pretty much at the back of the lot. You know, it's not near as objectionable as it could be if it, you know, expanded and you rezone it and you lose control over that.
I mean, you can table this for a month if you want to think about it and come back. You have that option. You don't have to re-notify again if you want to do that.
Well, that might be a good thing because we are now trying to, we are in the process of trying to make a decision of who's going to be there for sure, so.
Table.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Joe and Lori Bowlin. This is a rezone from A1 to O1 and SF2.
Correct.
Presented by Joe and Lori.
Bowlin.
Hi, I'm Lori Bowlin. I have the house and two acres on Don Tyson Parkway. I would like to, my original plan when I bought that was to remodel the house and live there. However, the remodel cost came in way expensive for me, so. But I'd like to keep the shop in the back acreage for my husband, for his man cave or whatever you want to call it. But I'd like to be able to rezone the, the house and I think it's .88 acres to, for when I sale in case someone wants to put in a, a office or something like that in there, which is exactly what's two doors down. We have a lawyer and we have an optometrist down there.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Patsy?
Okay. You, you indicated before when we talked about it, you wanted that shop to be used separately. It can only be an accessory structure if it's with the house itself.
Correct.
So when you rezone it to O1, it's not on that lot anymore?
Correct.
If you go back and split it, we have to keep that, that building on that former lot and it has to stay as an accessory to that house, unless you build another house.
When you and I had our conversation, you said that I could go ahead and deed it to an adjoining property owner.
Yeah, if you get all that worked out.
Yeah.
But right now, we're just rezoning the front part to O1 and the rest of it to SF2, but we're not splitting the property. I'm just cautioning you when you come back with a split, we're creating a situation for yourself if we do that, okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. The land use plan indicates low density residential use for the area. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the companies of land use plans recommended for approval, protect the positive aspects of neighborhood character, assure adequate land allocation for residential purposes, and allow the development of residential office uses between residential and commercial and industrial to stabilize and buffer the limits of each type of development.
Thanks, Patsy. Any comments at all from the audience? Yes, sir. If you can give us your name and your address, please?
Good evening, committee. My name's Michael Neville. My wife and I own the property directly behind the property in question at 855 East Don Tyson. We're at the very back of the property. We've got the four acres behind that. Back in 2002, my ex-wife and I owned the 10 acres. We did a lot split and we, we obtained a pavement waiver that the city said they would do a one-time pavement waiver on it, but any more lot splits on that property would require paving to, for that driveway out back. Since then, my driveway has deteriorated beyond use. We've put thousands of dollars worth of gravel on it over the years. We can't keep a driveway. When, when it rains, we can't use it. We have to cut across the Ramsey Lane through our yard to, to get out of our driveway. My concern is with this lot split again is that, one, it was, it was not supposed to be another lot split. It has been split twice since, one with a quick claim and then once with a split. And with the, bringing in the commercial or the office building as they're stating, it's, that's a private driveway back there that myself and our neighbors use. It's gonna create more traffic. It's going to create more wear on the driveway that's already deteriorating and I really see that being a problem.
Okay, first of all, she's not splitting the property. It's still untracked. You can have one piece of property with that, two different zoning classifications on it without splitting the property.
Okay.
Her access to the office on the front would come off of Don Tyson Drive, Don Tyson Parkway rather than off of that access easement.
Well, it's still, there's, there's only one driveway that feeds that property.
Do you have a driveway off of, directly to the house off of Don Tyson Parkway?
Pull into the driveway and then directly right into the house.
Okay.
The road he's talking about, first off, he lives in the back.
Sorry, go ahead.
He lives in the back. It doesn't even affect his property as if you rezone just the front part, there's no reason for anyone to go past the front part. There wouldn't be anyone traveling back to his, to his property in the back.
And, and we did have the discussion, if you want to split it, we've had so many splits, they're gonna have to be a street access developed down through there.
Yeah, and I'm not going to do that. It's like I told you, I was just gonna deed it to the, to the person directly behind us.
Well, if you get that worked out, we're not, we're creating any more lots that will work. But if we create another lot, we've got to have a street built down through there.
We're not creating another lot.
Okay.
But just to be clear, the driveway in question is the same driveway that we use for ingress, egress on our property?
That's correct. And you have an access easement across that and nothing's changing with this.
That's correct.
Right.
Because I'm concerned with the traffic deficit.
Right.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the audience? Yes, sir.
839 East Don Tyson Parkway. I'm actually right across from her and-
What's your name?
Your name? Alex Rodriguez. And I live right across from where she's went and do all this. And as it is, it's already an eyesore because I have all this trash, all this stuff in her, in her lot that they're dragging in every day by the trailer. I have also, my, my next door neighbor, he's living in a trailer. I don't even know what's going on right there. He's Derek, I believe. And her and Derek have been talking and they've been talking about building a barn in, I don't even know what it is, like basically building an apartment inside of a barn. And, you know, that's something I don't want to have in front of my house. The reason I bought the, the two acres I have, 839 East Don Tyson, is to not have, you know, offices next to my, next to my property. I have, I have three children. It's like, I don't want to have to worry about them playing outside and someone possibly passing through there. It's a, it's a gravel driveway right now. And it's like, the traffic that goes through there right now, it ruins the driveway. I can't imagine putting offices where it would, it wouldn't even look right. It, it would not be aesthetically pleasing to me at all. And it's like, I grew up in this area in Don Tyson. I was there before it was Don Tyson, whenever it was a two-lane road. I grew up when I was a boy and it was, it was just, you know, cows and pasture. That's all it was. And I still remember that. I lived off of Edgewood, 207. And I grew up there. And now the infrastructure is struggling. And it's like, I can't imagine increasing traffic right there. The gravel, the gravel driveway she lives on, or where her house is, it's literally probably five feet. And then the rest of the driveway is mine. It's like, you know, they, they don't put any money to maintain it. My, my back neighbor, Mike, does. And it's like, if they were to put that, that would affect us, the environment, all the stuff that could possibly go into the lake, the waterways. It's like, we already have a water issue. It floods and it becomes a river on that gravel driveway. It's like, and I can't imagine him increasing the grade of the, of the, of the land to be able to build on top of it. Because he's, he's talking about crazy stuff and, you know, I don't want that. I, and I don't think anybody else would want that. And the reason I got land, the, the, the three acres that we have is to not have to see that. She talks about an optometrist and a lawyer, two blocks or something like that. It doesn't look right. It looks weird. It looks out of place. And it's like, you know, I see Springdale and I see progressing. I'm not against, against progression. I'm not against growth. But if we're gonna do, I, I, I expect us to do it right. And it's like, you know, I, I, I grew up here and I'm all for Springdale. And it's like, I believe we're gonna do the right thing tonight. And I thank you.
Thank you for the comments. Any other comments from the audience?
I would like to say something. First off, Mr. Nolan does not live in a trailer there. He has a trailer there that he stores there. He does not live there. I actually sold that gentleman his property. It used to be my property. And it is still a, a field, just like it's always been a field. And to enter my, my property from this, from Don Tyson, it is directly right there. There is no reason for anyone to go back. If there's traffic back there that is destroying the road, it is from them. It isn't from anyone having to do up front at all.
Thank you. All right, this is a call for the vote. Any questions or comments from commissioners?
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Mark Cloud.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Couch?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the 27th.
Okay, thank you. The last of the rezones that we have is our 2407 Sunrise Point LLC from a C2 to a C5. And this is presented by Blue and Associates.
Hello, we start with Blue and Associates. This had been through LSD, approved LSD project and I believe, I don't know the full details, but this project was supposed to have a drive-through window and I believe that got overlooked. And now we're coming back to get a rezone to allow the drive-through window.
That's correct. It, it does, I don't think we picked up on that in the review of the plans that you intended to have a drive-through. That's why it has to be rezoned. Okay. And you're also asking for a phasing plan because you want to close out part of it. Okay. The adopted land use plan in case regional commercial use for this area, the rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies as recommended for approval, encourage the development of a wide range of commercial development, and encourage the development of regional commercial areas that accommodate a variety of wholesale retail and service and office uses.
Thanks, Patsy. Any comments at all from the audience? All right, this would be two parts. This comes to the commission as a call for the vote on the rezone. And then we also have large scale, which would be another motion subject to staff comments. But let's deal with the rezone first. It'd be a call for the vote. Board Austin, call for the vote.
Austin?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Couch?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tyler?
Motion passes unanimously.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the 27th.
Thanks. The next part of this would be the large scale 23-34. This is presented also by Blue and Associates, so it's a large scale. This would be a motion, subject to any staff comments that we might have.
I have a question for you. It appears that you're gonna do all the paving, street improvement. It looks like you're just not gonna do all the, I guess, landscape inside the curb. Is that correct?
Yes.
Phase two, I'm sorry.
Everything seen in blue, including landscaping.
Okay, and the, the structure is built. The pad is ready for the second one.
The metal's out there. What, how long do you think it's gonna be before we go to phase
two?
I don't know that answer, but I believe they were wanting to make it a quick turnaround. It wouldn't be a delayed process.
Okay, so you want to phase it so you can go ahead and get CVO for the first building?
I believe that's what they intended to do.
Okay, I think we've got some issues. Ed, do you have one?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that you're relocating a fire hydrant there into that green space during the deal on phase two building, during the blow.
Okay.
And that you cannot get a CVO for the first building unless the fire hydrant is operating.
So could we extend phase one in, to include that fire hydrant?
Yeah, the, the ideal way would be to show the, show the fire hydrant.
Okay.
All right.
So what we're talking about is the phasing plan has to be changed so that the fire hydrant is installed before they get CVO and it's included as part of phase one. Ben, do y'all have any issues with the phasing of this one?
Yeah, same comment related to storm sewer. All the storm sewer has to be completed with phase one and some of it is shown in the area of phase two. And then if the landscaping's not complete, that area will need to be stabilized so we don't have sediment runoff.
Okay, so you, so really part of that area along the north side of that's where the detention is really needs to be included in phase one as well?
Yes.
We have to have the ability for phase one to stand on its own in case phase two does, isn't completed.
All right, thank you. This would be a-
Wait a minute, Ron's got some comments too.
Ron, sorry, Ron?
I just have one question. With that, you're gonna go ahead and put in the curbs around where the green is on phase two, near the parking, or is, are you gonna leave that same grade?
Yes, I believe, I believe all curbing will be done at, at the same time, included with the pavement.
So basically, all that's being phase two is the building itself?
And the landscaping in the green areas.
Okay, what part of that landscaping in the green area would be necessary to meet the requirements for phase one? Because this is one where you put landscaping in other areas to be able to meet the requirements because it doesn't have foundation landscaping.
Sorry, we were just discussing. But yeah, we will need perimeter landscaping. So the landscaping in those green areas will need to be there for phase one because that is still part of that whole piece of property. So the, the landscaping will need to go in for that.
What we're coming down to is phase two is the building itself. Everything else on the site has to be completed for phase one.
That's where I'm at.
That's why I ask is what's the timeframe on phase two? Because I, I don't know that there's a, an advantage to doing the phasing plan if the pad's already poured, the mail's already there. I mean, you're well along, along that, that path and you gotta do the rest of it.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't know the answer to that, what their thought process was. But-
My suggestion would be we put this phasing plan on hold till we go through all that and they understand everything they're gonna have to do for the two phases. And see what the timeframe is for the, the second building itself and figure out how we move forward with that.
Is the first building, is it pre-leased or what's the status of building one?
I don't know the answer to that as well.
Ron, haven't y'all been out there to look for a CVO?
No, ma'am, not on this. When I talked to the contractor and he was saying that they thought they'd be within the next few weeks.
So hopefully by the next meeting, we'll know where that's gonna be and we'll have a better idea of what the phasing needs to be. Okay. Let's table the phasing plan until the next meeting and then we can move on. We can get the rezoning. It's already been approved. They'll go to council. And then we can visit after we get through all this other and see if we do need a phasing plan, what it needs to be.
All right.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
The next section on the agenda is section eight. These are all preliminary flats and replats and final flats.
We've got a replat with picnic addition, lots one and two, eight through 14. We've got a replat with picnic addition, lots one and two, eight through 14, presented by Crafton &amp; Toll. Andres Ferro? Yep.
Thank you. My name is Andres Ferro. Uh, we are, yes, uh, yeah, we are proposing to, uh, combine eight parcels into one. Uh, there is a separate, uh, submission that has been approved previously for a large scale for a residential building.
Staff comments?
This one. In addition to standard comments, the legal description and accompanying parcel list need to be updated to reflect the exclusion of four non-subdivision parcels.
You can't add anything to a subdivision unless we have approval from all the adjacent ones. So all those need to be taken off of this replat of picnic addition.
Yes, that's correct. We, we tried, we made an attempt to go that route and it was not possible. So we're going to, uh, create a separate plat for the other four parcels.
That's a, that's a daunting task sometimes to get the other part done. Yeah.
We are fully aware of that.
Yeah. Okay.
They need to do that. So.
All right. We just need to clean up this plat so those are taken off because we're only replating this portion of the picnic addition. So the rest of that needs to come off before you get signatures.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
We will take those steps.
Thank you. Thanks, Sharon. Any comments at all from the audience? If not, this comes to the commission as a motion, subject to the staff comments that we've heard.
So motion.
Mark Cloud, motions?
Second.
Second.
Cloud, excuse me, Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Couch?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
That passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
If you want this to go to city council next Tuesday evening, the ordinance needs to be in our office by noon tomorrow.
With a revised plat.
With a revised plat. If not, if you don't have any by noon tomorrow, it'll be the second council meeting, which is the 27th.
Okay. We won't be ready, we, we won't be ready by tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
The next three issues are final plats. Uh, we've got the cottages at the park, phase three, and this is presented by ESI.
Thank you, Jason Apple with ESI. Um, here with the final plat for cottages at the park, phase three. I'll answer any questions.
Thanks.
We have staff comments?
Planning has standard comments only for this.
No more staff comments? Okay.
Sorry, we got distracted. Um, this is cottages at the park, phase three, right? Final plat checklist items and the final inspection, which is scheduled for the 13th of February. We got to pass that.
Do we have, I know the amenities that were part of phase one and two are well along the way.
Yes.
Okay. When, in order to get this signed, we may have to bond for whatever's not completed.
Okay. I think the pool's been done or poured. And then I think the clubhouse is framed. I haven't been out there in a little while, but-
It is framed, the, the-
I don't know if the roof's on, but-
Yeah, it's not completed. When we get ready to do signatures, we have to bond for whatever's left over of those amenities that need to be done.
Okay.
Okay?
Do we have any, uh, comments from the audience?
Greg, do you have a comment?
If not, this should, uh-
Yeah, I think he's decided.
I, you were pretty slow to come to the microphone, Greg. That's, that's all I'm saying. All right.
Greg Taylor, I live at 2991 Willoughby Circle in Springdale. Um, my question is, I know, I know that there's the pool and the pool house, but I believe there was other amenities in the PUD that I don't know that have been addressed. That's my only comment.
Okay. We're going to go over the amenities list and see what had to be completed for the completion of phase one and two, and they'll bond for whatever's not done. Okay? Okay.
This would-
Because the PUD document says phase one and phase two would have, be completed before phase three would move on. And we got to get to that point before we can close out phase three.
Sure.
This comes to the commission then as a, uh, motion, subject to the staff comments?
So motion.
Mark Cloud, so motions?
Second.
All right. Second, Brent?
Compton?
Yes.
Couch?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin? Cloud?
Yes.
That passes unanimously. Thank you.
If you want this to go to council next Tuesday evening, the ordinance needs to be in our office by tomorrow at noon.
We can go to council and then we'll address him and he's at signature.
You realize I'm the last one to sign and I'm not going to sign until all that's taken care of.
I just want to make sure we get the next one.
Okay. But it won't be signed until we get all that stuff taken care of and bonded for. Okay.
We've got a final plat, the Charlotte Edition on 48th Street, presented by Hawkins Weir Engineers.
Good evening. My name's Andy McCollum. I'm with Hawkins Weir Engineers and this the final plat for Charlotte Edition, Club Car Wash.
Have any staff comments?
For planning, in addition to standard comments, show water service to lot two and the asphalt drive either dedicate via this plat or a separate instrument and then show book and page on this plat.
On the access easement, we had planned to do that by separate documents so we could get some maintenance agreements and that sort of thing.
Okay.
As well. Um, lot two, we were going to leave the service for the future owner to take care of on that because we don't have any plans for that lot at this time.
But you can't create a separate lot if it doesn't have water on it.
Yeah.
So we have to bring service across the street?
You have to get water to that lot before the lot can be created.
Okay.
And as far as the access easement is concerned, if you want to do it with a separate easement, it needs to be filed and documented, put on this plat before we'll sign this plat.
Yeah, we, we knew that.
Again, I'm the last one to sign and I won't sign until all that's taken care of.
Understood.
Okay.
Engineering just says, uh, final plat checklist items.
Any other staff comments? No? Any comments from members of the audience? If not, this comes to the commission then as another motion that's subject to, uh, the comments that you've heard from staff.
Motion subject staff comments.
Motion by Dale Tyler?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hussein.
Couch?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
If you want this to go to council next week, the ordinance has to be in our office by tomorrow at noon with the understanding that you won't get signatures until all this stuff is done.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. The last of the, uh, plat items that we have is Brentwood Village, phase one, out on Hilton Road, and this is presented by ESI.
Thank you, Jason Apple with ESI. Answer any questions?
Staff comments?
For planning, we have the same as GIS that, um, two of the streets, Juniper and Jade, need to be renamed. We already have existing streets with that name. And also for planning, the trails that are going across when we were out there last week, um, they, they weren't formed or anything because there were still utilities going in. So do you know when that will be done?
Before final plat signatures?
Good answer, uh, Jason, good answer.
Final plat checklist items, complete the punch list from the final walkthrough and update the floodplain note to the new map panel.
And we're not going to have air conditioning units or anything put in those trail access points, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Any comments from the audience at all? If not, this comes to the commission, um, as another motion, subject to staff comments.
So motion.
Mark Cloud, motions?
Second.
We have a second down from Jennifer. Thank you.
Hussein?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Couch?
Yes.
That passes unanimously. Thank you. That takes us to, uh, large scale. Uh, we've already dealt with the issue at Sunrise Point. Uh, let's go to county line storage. Uh, this is presented by Swope Consulting, Phil Swope. We've got a number of variances, uh, five different variance requests, which we'll handle first. And then we have the large scale, uh, which would be a separate issue, uh, to follow the conversation on the variances. Mr. Swope?
Yep. This is a project that was previously approved by you guys. We had seven buildings at the time. It's a self-storage facility. Um, we've come back with a new layout that's only five buildings. It's more square footage than before, but, um, just a different, different arrangement. Um, all these variances were heard and approved before. So it's really just, we're having to do this again, even though it's really what we heard before. So I can go through some of those if you want me to talk about those variances.
Well, I think you can say it was approved before, but this is a whole different layout than what we had.
Correct.
And a different type of building. So I don't know that the variances can automatically be assumed we're going to get those again.
Sure.
Uh, let's, let's start with, um, building inspection comments.
Yeah, as we discussed, um, these buildings, they changed the floor plan on these buildings. So now we have self-storage units with interior hallways. And once we go to that with over 5,000 square feet, they'll have to be sprinkled. So before we, before we start this, before they, we can issue permits, we're going to have to see a, a revision of this and see the, um, fire lines and the, um, hydrant, and the meters.
Yeah, we're, we're fine with that.
Okay. So do we think that's enough of a change that we need to table this until we get that worked out?
When I talked to Mr. Stith before, he thought that we could handle that.
We can, we can, we can work through that as long as there's enough green space there to put the meters in. You, I think you, you have it on the side there. I'm not sure.
Yeah, we can make that work.
Okay. I do know we have several pages of comments. Do you want us to go through all those comments or do you want to?
Well, I guess I'm unaware. When I talked to Ron, I thought we were down to just one or two left. Am I missing something?
We have the comments with all the variances and then there's still, um, some updates that need to be made on the plans because it's two of the buildings and I think the num, or the letters may be flipped up there on the left side, that, um, there's two of the buildings that have curb and gutter around them. And on the plans, it doesn't show ADA accessibility. I know you told me that it has ADA accessibility, but it doesn't show it on the plans. So those are all going to have to be updated.
Okay. Yeah, that's no problem. Yeah. Yeah. When we talked last week, I thought those were the main issues and that we had resolved all those. But yeah, if there's, if there's a revision, that's no problem.
Okay. Let's talk about all the variances. You got an issue first?
So we need to, um, remove the restrictor plate to the upstream end of the outlet structure.
Okay.
Okay. Um, we need to use the most current version of the Springdale Standard Details, which is October of 18. Show the modified curb across the drive apron. And then this is kind of the biggest one, which is to update to the new master street plan. County Line Road is now an arterial with 100 feet of right-of-way. So you need 50 feet of right-of-way on your side. And I think that'll cause some grating issues with your detention pond. I don't think it's something that can't be overcome, but it's substantial. Okay. Um, on the cover page, please let's display all associated deviations, variances, waivers by Spring, by their Springdale Plan and Department project number. And that's if the variances are approved, please make sure all of them are on there. Handicap ramps shall be provided wherever a sidewalk crosses a curb, it crosswalks, driveways, and street intersections. Handicap ramps are not allowed to extend into the parking area, um, which is the comments that you had made that those buildings are now ADA accessible. Plans need to be updated to show this. Need to show details of handicap ramps. Truncated domes are required per ADA requirement. Show detail of truncated domes. Um, sorry, I forgot to mark out one, a couple of these that we did work through. Okay. Interior parking area landscaping is required in accordance with chapter 56. Show the total area of the parking lot, the percentage of landscaping required, and percentage of landscaping provided. Include a drawing that identifies all areas, including calculations. Four of the six islands have trees. Um, the other twos, other two do not have trees. Why and did they get moved somewhere else? Chart shows required minimum of 75% shade trees, but only 35% are provided. Um, that question wasn't addressed in the response to comments. Show the size and location of all freestanding signs. Show distances from street right-of-way. And on commercial design standards, all sides of principal building that directly faces an abutting public right-of-way shall feature at least one customer entrance unless the principal building directly faces more than two abutting rights-of-way. Then only two entrances are required, one along the primary street and one along the secondary street. Variance has been requested. Continuous internal pedestrian walkways, no less than five feet in width from the public sidewalk to the principal customer entrance of all principal buildings on the side are required. Variance requested. Internal pedestrian walkways shall connect focal points of pedestrian activity and shall feature landscaped areas along no less than 50% of their length. Weather protection features such as outings or arcades are required within 30 feet of all customer entrances, shall be constructed parallel of the side of the building and cannot extend into the parking area or drive. I know a few of those have been added. I don't know if they've been on all the buildings, but you still have the variance for that. Five-foot sidewalk along the full length of the building, along any side that features a customer entrance is required. The sidewalk shall be set back from the building foundation at least six feet to provide areas for foundation landscaping. Variance has been requested. The sidewalk is there now, but no landscaping. Foundation landscaping is required. Variance requested. Provide at least two of the items listed under central feature and community spaces in the Springdale Commercial Design Standard. Variance has been requested. Central features and community spaces shall have direct access to the public sidewalk. Variance requested. Facades over 100 feet in linear length shall incorporate wall projections and/or recesses per Springdale Commercial Design Standard. Um, I'm not 100% sure if these buildings meet that requirement. I asked to, for you to check the rear of building E. Um, and I don't think there was a response on that. Each principal building on a site shall have clearly defined, highly visible customer entrances, featuring any three of the following: canopies or porticoes, overhang, recesses, projections, arcades, raised common parapets over the door, peaked rift forms, arches, outdoor patios, display windows, integrated tilework, indoor moldings, integral planters or wing walls that incorporate landscaped areas, indoor places for sitting. Variance has been requested. Entryway landscaping is required per Springdale Commercial Design Standard. Exterior ground-mounted or building-mounted equipment, including but not limited to mechanical equipment, utilities, and banks of meters shall be screened from public view with landscaping or with an architectural treatment compatible with the building architecture. Will the interior storage units be climate-controlled? Will there be, where would the HVAC equipment be? And comment is it will need to be screened. Um, and then signed design materials and placement should complement this overall architectural design of the building.
Any other staff comments? Any comments from members of the audience on this issue? This would come to the, uh, commission as a, a call for the vote on the variances. Often we do these as a lump rather than, um, one at a time. Would you be inclined to put them together or would you be inclined to deal with each one separately? There are an awful lot of comments here from Ron and staff on these issues.
I have a, I have one question. Uh, are these conditioned? Are the interior units conditioned or not?
Yeah, yeah, there's a central hallway down these. There's some interior storage. That's correct.
So are you treating that so it stays temperature?
Yes, that's right.
Are the units on the roof?
Um, you know, I don't know the answer to that. I believe they're over the, uh, the can, whatever canopile are going to have to do on the, on the, over the doors on the side. Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't. Personally, I just feel like there's a lot of stuff to unpack here. I don't know if I feel comfortable voting one way or, or voting for a motion one way or another. It just seems like there's a lot of things that need to be addressed. That's just my opinion. Other ballots may have different opinions.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah.
Any other comments from commissioners?
I will concur with Mark on-
I'll, I'll be happy to offer to withdraw just so we can get-
Well, you can table and bring it back.
Yeah, I, I guess I thought we were closer on some things than we were.
Yeah.
So yeah, that, that is not-
You comfortable with tabling it?
Yes, that's okay.
Okay, good. Items tabled?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
That takes us to... These are large scales. We've got 48 street storage. This is a revised presentation presented by Bates and Associates.
Yeah, that's more interesting.
I'm sorry. This is on a revised large scale. Sidewalk on the square, presented by ESI.
I'm sorry.
No problem. Thank you, Jason Apple with ESI. This project's had a couple of different names, but it's an apartment complex, 10 acres on Powell Street. We are, the proposal was to enhance the amenity package for the apartment complex. So we're just changing the interior green space in the amenity package, so I'll answer any questions.
Staff comments?
For planning, we don't really have any comments in regards to this, but Friday, we went out for a pre-final inspection on the phase with the buildings. And we found out that the parking lot lights have not been installed yet. Apparently, the new owners want to run the power off of this clubhouse rather than where it was before. So parking lot lighting is not something normally we bond for or anything, so we've got a few issues we need to work through on that. So it pertains, but doesn't pertain.
How soon are they trying to get a certificate of occupancy for some of the buildings?
I don't know. I'm sure they're working their way around to try to get individual buildings, but I don't know if they're immediate need for CO or...
Parking lot lights or something. We've got to have some lights on this site. And I think there's some safety concerns going on out there now. We don't want to get people living in there and not have enough lighting and that kind of stuff. So that needs to be addressed before we get any CVOs for the rest of the buildings.
If I may on that, when we were out there Friday, walking around on the buildings on the south side, the first three buildings, they had multiple windows that had been broken out with rocks or some other type of item. And they'd also said they'd had some problems with graffiti in the area throughout the project. So yeah, lighting is going to be very important. And on the buildings, I didn't see any wall packs, just, I think, like a wall sconce on the fronts of the buildings. So it's a pretty dark area other than light that comes from the airport or surrounding businesses.
I don't think it was intended to light the parking lot areas with wall packs on the buildings. It was, there's poles and stuff out there that are supposed to go in, that need to be in before we...
We got a site lighting plan.
Yeah, and we're expecting to see that. If they want to wait till this gets done, that's fine, but we need to address that upfront. Billing inspection, engineering, got any comments on this proposed addition?
No comment for engineering.
No comment.
Thanks, Ben. Thanks, Ed. Any comments from the audience at all? This would come to the commission. Silos on the square is a motion subject to the staff comments that you've heard.
Motion subject to staff comments.
Thanks, Brent.
Second.
We need a second on that? All right. Thanks, Dale. Thank you.
Austin?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton? Couch?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Passing unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
L 2405 is Hillcrest Village, Phase Two. And we've got a variance that's been requested, and then large scale. And we'll deal with the variance first, but this will be a motion and then a call for the vote. This is presented again by ESI.
Thank you, Jason Apple with ESI. Our proposal's for 79 townhome units on this property. Very similar style to the first phase to the north that's been completed, or mostly completed. The variance request is for parking and for the use of the garage spaces as parking spaces to support driveways and additional parking that we have on site. We do have, if we count the garages, we do have the amount of spaces required by code. And that's the request for the variance, is for the parking space, or the garages to be counted as parking spaces. And I'll answer any other questions.
I got some questions to start with.
Patsy?
In Phase One, were the garages, the spaces in the garages counted as parking for that phase?
I believe so. They had to be, I mean, they have to be for that phase to work.
Can we go over to the driveway slopes and some of those? There is no way you can park a car in that driveway and into the car. Those are so steep slopes. What happened?
Developer decided to have single slab elevations for those units and didn't step those buildings down.
Okay, are we proposing the same kind of thing for this one?
We've got elevations shown on the plan for floor elevations.
Okay, so if you want to count that space in the garage, and those first units had double garages and these were all single?
Sure, yes.
And you got a really steep driveway, and you can't park a car in that driveway, and there's no place to park the car on the street, what are we going to do?
I mean, I can show you on the grading plan that it's going to be sufficient. It's not an excessive slope on this phase.
I think you showed us that on the other one, didn't you?
I'm not sure how those got that way.
It raises a question. When we allow you to count the space inside the garage in that driveway for your two spaces when you can't park there?
I mean, I think these were tighter than the 25. This new plan has a 25-foot separation between the curb and the side, or the curb and the unit. I think some of these were tighter than that. I mean, it's just kind of been an ongoing conversation that we've had with these projects. But I think some of those distances are smaller than the 25 feet.
Okay, we got other comments. Let's do the rest of the comments, and we'll come back to this.
Ron? Ben?
What have you got to be first?
Privacy fence on the west side of the pond needs to be moved so it doesn't block the outlet, stormwater outlet. Provide details for the retaining walls. Provide handrails. Show the street sections and profiles. Show access easements around the streets and the sidewalks. Provide signage plan. There's no stop signs or speed limit shown. And include a note stating if the lights are public or private and who's responsible for maintenance and billing.
For planning, it's, show the total number of parking spaces required, which is 188 spaces. There's a variance submitted to allow for one space to be allowed for each garage. Show total number of handicap spaces required. ADA spaces need to be determined on the total number of spaces. I believe you all figured the ADA spaces on just 37, which shows two. The way I had it figured, there should be six. Setback lines for all structures other than residential shall be 50 feet. When parking is permitted between building and street right-of-way, if no parking is allowed, then it can be reduced to 30 feet. Can you show the setback lines on the fronts of the buildings? Show the size and location of all freestanding signs. Show distances from the street wide right-of-way. The sign is there, but don't see the distance. Internal pedestrian walkways shall connect focal points of pedestrian activity and shall feature landscaped areas along no less than 50% of their length. Foundation landscaping is required in multifamily standards. I know Brandon sent something today about common open space. There's been some questions about that. I responded back, and then he sent something after that, which I did not have a chance to look at because it was four o'clock or so. Crime prevention through environmental design. 10 of the items listed in Section 3B number six with at least two from Items A through C and one from Item D required. Only one item from A is listed. How is visitor parking being identified? Then landscaping, building foundations shall be planted with ornamental plant material for a minimum of, with the three feet to a hard surface with the exception of access points. Please make sure all buildings have foundation landscaping.
Thanks, Ron. Any other comments from staff?
Building, fire, have anything?
This would come to the commission, first of all, dealing with the variance on the parking. This doesn't address the slope of the driveways, but it does address the number of spots. This would be a call for the vote on the variance.
Okay, I got a question before we do that.
Sure.
Can we go back to the layout? The street coming into this has all of those units with no parking along the street. Everyone who comes to visit, and those townhomes have to go over further into that to park to be able to visit those locations? That's the way that works?
Yeah, we have two spaces per unit at the unit.
One inside the garage, one in the driveway. And those are two- and three-bedroom units?
Two-bedroom.
Two-bedroom units. And if they have visitors, they all have to go further on into it. There's not room to park on the street. People will be parking on the street. Is there a way to add some parking, some visitor parking in those areas? Or is it possible to flip some of those units where the driveways are side-by-side so you'd have room to park along the street in front of those spaces between the driveways instead of the way it's laid out?
These are the units the developer asks us to provide, so that's...
The concern I had too, exactly what you're saying, but just knowing how people are going to live, there's no, there's no way. Some people aren't going to have stuff in their garage to be able to park in a garage. And I know how I am at my residence. If somebody parked behind me, I would not like it. I mean, just being able to, nobody's going to leave at the same time every day. So I would default to say most people are probably going to park on the street. Which, if you look between the driveways, it's 10 to 11 feet between the driveways, and most vehicles are 14 feet in length. There's no way you could do that. So if the intent of the required parking is to keep people off streets, there's no way this is going to do it. The other concern I would have is what Ronnie brought up with the ADA parking. Two spots in front of the clubhouse. There's two other collector spots for parking. It would be nice to at least have one spot in each of those designated spaces for ADA too, for people coming to visit. Would be my thoughts. I don't see how you're not going to have people all over the street.
I mean, we can address the ADA parking. I'm not concerned about that. I think we can have those spaces. I mean, I guess if we can't use the garage spaces as, to count for parking, there's really no advantage for us to do garages, you know? And I think it's an amenity for the units to have a garage that's located there. If I don't get to count it as any parking, then it doesn't do me any good to, you know, to provide that amenity in our case.
I don't think we're saying we don't want you to have the garages and count that as a parking space. We just need to make sure that there's room to park cars because you're going to have other people coming.
I just got a question, and I don't want to chase a rabbit, but, and I think we've had this discussion before, Patsy, but I don't remember how it turned out in counting the garages as a parking space. Is there any, I guess if it's a PUD, we'd maybe have a way, but is there any way, do we address the ability to hold developers or the apartment, the management of the apartments to require that those people keep their garage, to your point, Howard, to require that those garage spaces remain available for parking?
We can do it in a PUD, no question. I don't know if we can, I mean, we don't get a property maintenance agreement that goes along with this on how this is going to be maintained, so I don't know if we have any way to address that. But we have that concern. What keeps that garage from being full of stuff and you can't park in it? And then, yeah, my only concern is we're not providing enough on-street parking for those units as you first come in, to have some parking down in that area. Not everybody's going to walk over to the middle of it, park, and come back.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to using garages as parking spaces, but having driven through Phase One more times than I care to remember, the execution of that, how big concerns about giving some leeway to a developer? And just showing the pictures we just saw of the... That's one of a few things. So I've lost a lot of confidence in just the execution of this project, to be honest.
Do you want to go back and work on this a little bit and table it?
I'm not opposed to putting some sort of maximum grade on the driveways. And that's what, that's on the plan, and we can, you know, go at it that way. I mean, I think that would be an option to make sure that the driveway grades aren't what some of those ended up to be.
Let's start.
So on-street parking, I guess, is the, or additional visitor parking is a concern?
I think that's the concern. And it's not necessarily that you don't have enough. It's just how it's located on the property, for one thing. It's not evenly distributed. We know you needed some extra parking in front of the amenities. We get that part. But when you look at those single driveways with a single garage and no place to park out in front because it's just driveway, a little bit of green space, driveway all the way down through there, where are you going to park? Do you want to table this and go back and discuss this with your client? And come back in a month and see if we've come up with something more workable? What do you want to do?
Yeah, we'll table.
All right. Thanks, Jason. That item on Hillcrest Village is then tabled. Next item on the agenda is a public here on Forum Based Code. And this is for the city of Springdale on 815 East Emma, from a C1 to an NC2.
And I'm presenting it not...
And this will be Patsy, and this is on our new Springdale Senior Citizen Center.
As you know, we have moved the senior center to this site on the south side of Emma Street. It was included in the original Forum Based Code as C1 because it was put in there as part of the market center of the Ozarks. They chose that they don't need that area. In order for us to be able to adequately use it for a senior center, we need to move it from. And C1 to a NC2 allows us to put the building itself closer to the street that are utilized the property, and it's too small to be a campus type by itself. So this would actually be an amendment to the boundary line, and we switch that from a C1 to a NC2.
Any comments from the audience at all on this issue? It should be a really nice new amenity for our city. This would come to the commission as a call for the vote?
Call for the vote.
Cloud, call for the vote.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Couch?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. Next item, we're into the variances, our board of adjustment. These are all variances. Ciamara Ramirez, 1075 Sunrise Avenue. She wants to increase the height of a fence from three feet to five feet, and that's presented by Ms. Ramirez. Welcome.
Hi, yeah, my name is Ciamara. I live in 1075 Sunrise Avenue, and I am just here to see if I could keep my fence. I do want it for privacy. I do have children and one on the way. As you can see, in the back of my house, there's like trailers. And, you know, they have dogs and everything, and I was having trouble with them coming into my back property with their dogs pooping all over. So, and then I had my neighbor on that side going into my driveway. So every time it would rain, it would be like really muddy and all, you know, tracks, tires. So this is why I decided to get a fence. I did call the city before I got this done and ask if I needed a permit and stuff like that. And they told me, no, as long as, you know, it's six feet. that, and they told me, no, as long as, you know, it's six feet or less, which I went with the five feet. But they never told me I couldn't use that type of fence. So eight months later, the neighborhood officer comes in and tells me that, you know, the material that I use, it's not approved. And I'm like, well, I spent, you know, my $1,000 knowing it wasn't approved. So that's why I'm here, to see if I can keep it.
Thank you. Do we have any comments at all? Patsy, any comments from the staff?
Ron, do you have a comment?
Ron?
Code enforcement, have any, do we have anybody here from code enforcement? You have any comments on this one?
We just left a notice about the fencing material not being recognized.
Okay. And the height?
I don't know where the height was mentioned to me.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we received a call about it, so we went out. We left a notice about the fencing material was not recognized by the city.
On the zoning application, it says to increase the height from three feet to five. And that's in the front of the property? It goes all the way up to the right-of-way line? Is that where it goes?
I don't have anything on the front. I don't have any fence on the front. It's just on the side.
You have it that goes out to the street, toward the street, right?
Yeah, on the side.
Anything above the front of your house is considered to be the front. Can't be any taller than three feet in the front.
Unless it's granted from you guys.
Right, unless we have a variance to allow it to go from three feet to five for the front. And then the variance would be to allow that type of material.
Is it the same material in the back of the house as well?
I'm sorry, Mark, I haven't been to the back.
Can tell from the picture.
I couldn't either.
Yeah, it's the same material.
Is that the front yard right there?
Yeah.
There's also a picture of the backyard in one of these images that shows it. I was just curious if it's the same material. Ma'am, what's the purpose? So this is up, it's obviously not privacy from a view. Is it just to keep them from pulling into, putting their cars there? What is the purpose of this fence? Why did you put it there?
That side, so my neighbor couldn't keep out of my property. I did go talk to him and he didn't really comply.
Sure.
So he kept on just going in there, guessing because of that tree in his way, so he would just come into my driveway into his property, take his truck back there.
So he drives behind your house around that tree?
No, into my driveway, into, between that tree and that fence. Always leaving a track in there. So that's why I put that one in there. The one in the back, I put it because the, there's like a trailer RV parking in the back, and there was always people, there's always people walking their dogs there.
Sure.
And every time I would go out with my son, I would see them, you know, with their dogs there, pooping all over the back of my house. And that's why I decided to do the back as well.
Would a three-foot privacy wooden fence work to help deter your neighbor from pulling his truck through there?
No, I even have, I put up security cameras as well, and I even have people jumping the fence, even now at five feet, crossing into my property, so...
This location that we're looking at?
Yes. And I have a Ring video, if you guys wanna watch how he just walks into the property, like, there's no fence. So even with five feet, I'm still kind of, you know, and I do have kids, so...
This would come to us as a variance request, but it almost seems that there's two variances, not one. One would be for the height, the other one would be for the fencing material, which is not in compliance. I don't know how else to handle that. Anybody have a good suggestion on how we might handle that? The fence is already up, so...
Is this fence currently working to deter your neighbor from, is it working for you as it currently is?
For the neighbor, yeah. It's been currently up for like almost a year now. They just brought it to my attention that it wasn't, you know, good material, which I'm like, well, the fence has been up for like eight months, nobody said anything.
How many complaints did you receive on the fence?
I am, we only received one on this call.
It seems we could handle this with a simple variance request, which in a way would be granting the height of the fence, but also the fencing material if we wanted to handle it that way. I think that may be the fairest way to handle this, unless you've got a different way to do that. And if that's okay with you, that would be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote. Mark Cloud?
Compton?
Yes.
Couch?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. These are all variance requests that we have in front of you. B 2408, Dean and Tammy Rollins. This is for a variance on the rear setback from 20 to 10, presented by James Hall from CMI.
Good evening, my name's James Hall. I'm representing Dean and Tammy Rollins of 4348 St. Albans Drive. And our request is a simple setback reduction from the standard 20 feet in the rear to 10 feet to allow construction of a covered outdoor area. Standing by for any questions.
Any comments from the audience at all on the setback change?
Ed, do y'all have a comment?
Yeah, the fire department doesn't support setbacks, the reductions inside and rear setbacks. You'll note on this one that the, where the proposed addition is and where the rear of the house on the other street there, they're not in such alignment that they would ever wanna build close. So there's probably no possibility that we would have more, you know, there'd be 20 feet separation between the houses.
And this is an open-ended structure?
And it meets the fire code.
It does meet the fire code? This is open-ended, right?
We say that because the fire chief is wanting us to reduce the amount of space where they put these setbacks. And the fire code says five feet, but five feet is way too close with some of the building materials that we're using.
Sure.
So that's, that is not, just because it meets the fire code doesn't mean that we would let that go all the time, or won't let that go all the time. We want each one of these to be taken separately, and look at this one here. If you look at the rear of the other house, where if they were to build an addition on the rear of the house, it would not come anywhere near where this addition is being proposed.
It's just a covered...
Covered outdoor area.
Open, no walls, just an open, just an outdoor kitchen, correct?
That's correct, it is. And so that's the existing structure, and one of the things is we're just gonna extend that 12 feet. There is going to be a fireplace on the north end of the structure, but other than that, it'll be open wall similar to that with a gabled structure on the end.
Is it a real fireplace or a gas?
It is going to be a real fireplace, is the plan.
Thank you. Is there a utility easement in this backyard?
There is a utility and a drainage easement in the backyard, and we are stopping at the 10 feet to avoid that.
So the easement's 10 feet wide?
Correct. So the construction area will stop prior to the easement.
Okay. Any other comments from staff? Audience comments? This would be a call for the vote when it comes to the commission.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote. Mark Cloud?
Yes.
Hussein?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Passes unanimously, thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
Yep, thank you.
You do need to get a building permit.
Yes.
Next item is B 2409 from Bryce Coonert, 602 Longdale, increasing the fence height from six feet to eight feet, presented by Bryce Coonert. Bryce?
Hi, I'm just here to see if I can get my fence to stay at eight feet. I've got a problem with my neighbor to the south of me looking over the fence. I've got a pool back there and I've got granddaughters and my wife will be swimming back there sometimes, and he'll, he's got flower beds built up with railroad ties, and he can stand on them and look right over in my yard, as well as his windows from his house. And I got tired of it and I went to Lowe's and bought me some material and built the fence myself. I didn't know there was a need for a variance, and it's only on the one side. The rest of the fence is to code, I guess. I built it all six feet. When it come to his side, I went up to eight feet and went back down to six. So I'm just asking for a variance to keep that one side of the fence at eight feet tall, to block his view.
Did that eight feet alleviate your problem?
Yes, it did.
This fence is already built, is it not?
It is built, I built it myself.
That's what I thought, thank you.
You can see the fence there in the picture.
Any comments here from police, fire, any of that? Staff?
Just for privacy only.
Understood, understood. Comments from the audience? Yes, sir.
He lives to the other side of me.
Can you give me the name and address, please?
My name is Robert Blackwell, I live at 604 Longdale Drive. Before he put up the fence, when I first moved in there, before he did anything, my wife did come to me with a complaint. My daughters were playing in the backyard and the gentleman came up and told my wife that my daughter looked pretty with her pink jacket, and the only way he could do that would be peeping through that window in the backyard and just keeping an eye on my children. I do not like that, since he put that yard in there, my wife feels a lot better. Thank you.
Any comments from the commission?
Call for the vote.
This is a call for the vote.
Hussein?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Cloud?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Couch?
Yes.
Passes unanimously, thank you.
Thank you.
B 2410 from Jasmine Angelus, 1905 Garnet Road, wants to, variance reduction from 20 feet to 10 feet, presented by Jasmine Angelus.
Hello, yes, so we build, it's actually like a sunroom, but we thought it was a porch. We built it without the permanence. I'm a first-time owner, house owner, so I didn't know we needed permanence. Whenever neighbors called the city and said that we had built it, they came out, they looked at it and stuff, and I'm just asking for a setback from 20 to 10 feet, and it's already built and everything.
Okay, I believe you were given this in September of 2022?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and you haven't been into building inspection since then to get a permit?
So we did go, but they told us we had to come here first to see if we, you know, if you guys granted us the 10 feet, and then we can go back and get the permanence and have an inspector go.
Ed, you wanna talk about this?
Yeah, I talked about the other one, so I could talk about this one. If you'll see on the drawing here, there is a lean-to structure, and this is about what Tom said he found when he investigated the complaint that we received, and they were told to get a permit, this was back in '22. And then we're here now because Tom had let this thing, this thing has been sitting on his desk for 16 months, and so he went back and then put a stop-work order on the project so that they could then come here and get their variances and apply for their permit. Now, you also will notice from the pictures that that lean-to now has grown and it's got walls on it, and it's actually grown into the portable shed that was in the corner of the property. So no matter what you grant here, that shed would have to be torn down and the other shed would have to be removed, they're both too close to the property line.
We actually did tear the shed down, and we made it to the doghouse, but then Sarah, Sarah messaged me like the, how do you say, the requirements for the doghouse, and they didn't pass, so we're gonna tear it down this weekend.
Okay, so you had something into the easement, because there's an easement back there, that's what the shed was built into, the easement. Does this structure actually get into the easement, too?
It's hard to tell, but looking at the aerials, it looks to be about seven feet between the fence and the structure running the aerials. We would have to actually get out there and measure it to see if it is actually in the easement or not, but it's very close if it's not in the easement. You can also see, this is the other reason that we talk about not granting these variances, is the yard to the back is, lines up straight up with that property, so you got 20 feet and then 20 feet, so if you go 10 feet and then 10 feet, then you're 20 feet together, you put a couple sheds in there, next thing you know, we have a conflagration.
So we really need to go out and measure it and see, because we would have to vacate portion of the easement?
This picture does not reflect the actual distances. She needs to provide the actual distances so that we can make a true judgment if you wanna know what the actual distances are.
Because you can't encroach into the easement without the easement being vacated.
Okay.
Which means that the structure may have to be torn down or torn loose and move back, the existing sunroom type thing. We need you to give us some exact measurements so we can see what kind of a variance you do need if you're going to get a variance.
Okay. We had a survey done, is that gonna show like the measurements?
Well, the survey shows your existing structure, but it doesn't show the building that you added on to. When did you have it surveyed?
We had it done on, I have it here. On July 31st of 2013, I mean, 2023, I'm sorry.
Does it show the area on here as being on your survey?
Yes.
Did you submit that to us?
Unfortunately about surveys is, one, they don't show eaves, so that would mean that the eve is probably coming at least another, looks like at least another foot. So it is actually into the easement, if this is the, if this is the survey. And it doesn't show where that building was actually attached to that shed unless it's just a bad angle, but it looks like they took it all the way to the shed, so it doesn't show that either on the survey, so I don't know how accurate it is.
If the variance is not granted, then this is gonna have to come down, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know about the rest of the commission, but I'd need more detail about where, how many, how much foot we have behind it and sheds are there or not there. The way I, what I see in front of me, I would decline the variance, just because it looks like it's encroaching upon lots of things. So if you wanna table it and get some good measurements, get some updated pictures, it shows exactly what you have, and if you're in the easement, if you're not in the easement, to give us a better understanding of what you have and make it a lot easier for us to make a different decision possibly.
Okay, sounds good.
Tabling, it means you have to be back next month.
Next month, yeah.
Okay.
If you can get some accurate kinds of data and then work with staff, maybe next month it'd be easier for us to understand.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It also appears that they may have, they may be exceeding the lot area.
Need to calculate all that before we get back.
B 2411 is TSI Holding. This is on 2202 South 48th. Variance for commercial design standard. Structure is back inside. Mike Robertson?
Good evening, my name's Mike Robertson, I'm a project manager for Milestone Construction at 2002 South 48th Street. My intent is to, I have twofold intent here for this variance request. One is to change the 50-foot setback on Levine Street to 20-foot setback. Second, also to hopefully have an approval of a design standard of the rendering. Second, also to hopefully have an approval of a design standard of the rendering that we sent in. Left is existing and right is the proposed new building.
Be accessed through the driveway into it?
Yes.
With vehicles, they wouldn't go around to the back?
Yeah, existing driveway parking lot would go right into the two roll-up doors.
Any other questions, any comments at all, or questions from staff? Anybody in the audience have any comments at all? This would be to the commission as a call for the vote.
Would, I got a question. Would this replace your existing containers that are on site?
It sure would.
I like that. Are you proposing a, a new drive? Is that what I see or is that me just reading that completely wrong?
No, no, we are not. That is.
That's existing or?
No, that is tabled, set aside, not going to do it.
Twofold.
There, we sent a new one in, I guess. But no, the driveway is.
Is the fencing going to stay as is that you currently have on site?
So the fencing, um, let's see, there's another rendering that shows it a little better farther away. Right there. Uh, the fencing now is existing. That northwest corner is there, but it comes all the way to the curb, which would be the front of that building. We're going to move that to where it stops at the corner, back corner. Levine's, if we're standing on Levine Street, you're looking at the building. And then that little, um, I don't know, the outlet of the fence there in front of the building is for trash container, okay? And then existing, what's existing now, you would go past and into the back lot behind the existing building. So to answer your question, it's going to change slightly.
Sure. You have trailers to go back there, right, to unload material or in the back and behind the building?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, there's, you know, some trailers and stuff like that.
Sure.
Not heavy equipment. But back behind there, it's materials that we want to get inside.
Sure.
We're actually getting more space between the fence and the street. That's going to have some green space instead of the fence going all the way up to the.
Exactly. There will be some green space that's not existing now. It's there, but it's behind a fence.
Call for the vote.
Thank you, Mike. Any comments from the audience or staff members? If not, this comes to the commission as a call for the vote? Oh, did you?
Call for the vote again.
I looked and you weren't there. Call for the vote, Mark Cloud.
Keith.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Cloud.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Couch.
Yes.
Hussein.
Yes.
That passes unanimously. Thank you. B 2413 Carlos Muñoz, 300 Harve Street, wanting to increase the fence height from six feet to eight feet presented by Carlos.
Hi, I'm Carlos from 300 Harve Street. And I just want to increase the fence height on the west side of my property from six to eight feet just because I can see the playground from the school next to my house. And it's weird whenever I'm at home just doing stuff and then, you know, I can see a kid on the playground. We make eye contact. It's weird. And just want to get, you know, just want to get that done, fixed. Please.
And all that's in the back of your property?
Just on the back, not on the sides.
Any comments at all, staff, members of the audience? Again, this would come to the commission as a call for the vote. Howard Austin, call for the vote.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Cloud.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Couch.
Yes.
Hussein.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes.
Thank you. How soon can I get started on that?
Tomorrow.
Cool. Thank you. Y'all have a good night.
Last item under the variance is Maria Ramirez, Tacos El Ben Pastor, 2204 South Turner Street. A variance for a utility requirement, use unit 44. Presented by Maria Guadalupe Rios Yanez.
Jackie's going to translate for us.
Yes, I'll be serving as the interpreter today. My name is Maria Ramirez. Uh, I'm seeking a variance for the utility requirement for my food truck.
This is the one we approved on Turner Street where they built the concrete plat, pad. You want to get power to it? And I have to use a generator?
What month was that, sorry?
Uh, two or three months ago. How, how close is that?
Yes, that's correct.
They want to add a utility connection so they can have power to it. You have your gray water disposal method taken care of and your freshwater source identified?
Yes, we have containers for the water.
Okay, well, I have to see your disposal and your methods before we can let you go there once we get the electric done too.
Uh, we actually already have all of that, I believe, with the restaurant agreement that we have.
Okay, this is the one that you have an agreement with a restaurant in Rogers? Okay, I remember. There's so many, sometimes I can't keep them all straight, but I think we do have both of those. You just need the power is all you need now.
Yes, that's it.
Thanks, Patsy. Any other questions, any comments from staff members, audience members? If none, this comes to the commission again as a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
You, Brent?
Tyler.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Cloud.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Couch.
Yes.
Hussein.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Thank you. Passes unanimously. Last two items on the agenda before we get to the report from Patsy. The expansion of a non-conformity in an NC-2. This is on 407 Crutcher presented by Dinora Polanco.
I will also be helping Dinora Polanco with the interpretation.
That's fine. Welcome.
Yes, I'm here because I want to know if you give me perm for making a bedroom for my mom addition to my house, you know, because she doesn't have a place to live and I don't know where I can put her. My house is only three bedroom and one and a half bathroom. And I have two children and I don't have a place for her. And she's 84 years old.
Okay.
And she only have me.
Ed, have you looked at this to see if she can access it? You, you can't access from one bedroom into the other to add on this bedroom. Have y'all looked at this at all?
We have not been in the house. We don't know how it's laid out.
Okay. This, this is kind of a strange situation. Normally when you add on to the structure in a, in the form-based code, you have to bring it up to standard and it would have to become a two-story house. That seems to be a little bit excessive to add one bedroom to it. So we're here to allow, have a deviation to allow her to ask a small bedroom in the back. The only issue that we have is whether or not, how it can be laid out to meet the fire code, and we haven't addressed that issue. Before we, we spend a whole lot more time, we need to see if you guys are good with creating that and allowing her to expand the non-conforming to look at putting a bedroom in the back and not have to make it two-story. It seems a little bit unreasonable in this case. Well, it really is a deviation from the form-based code in that it says when you expand the footprint, you have to bring the entire structure up to the code and, and that being two-story. That seems a little excessive. But I don't know if the bedroom can be laid out the way she wants to lay it out because we haven't looked at it to meet the fire code as far as access and all that too. But before we go to all that trouble, we need to know if you guys are good with allowing this deviation, to allow this non-conforming use to be expanded without bringing up to the full code. No, we need it in the form of a motion to grant the deviation that it doesn't have to be brought to the full standard of the form-based code in that it doesn't have to be two-story.
I'd make a motion to that effect.
Mr. Hussein.
Second.
Do we have a second for that motion?
Second.
Mark Cloud, second. Thank you, Mark.
Austin.
Yes.
Cloud.
Yes.
Compton. Couch.
Yes.
Hussein.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Okay.
There you go.
We can go forward with it not having to, to make it two-story, but she needs to get someone to lay out the location of the bedroom, how she wants to put it on there and send it to the building inspector. And they need to review it to see if it meets the fire code on how you access it. And am I correcting that you can't go through one bedroom to get through another one? It has to have a hallway to get to?
Well, the, the, if it, if it's next to a bedroom, it has to have at least one window that can be an emergency egress. Now, they could technically build one, attach it to the house and put a door and a window on it and it would meet the code. But she, I don't know if she wants to let her 80-year-old grandmother have to walk around through the mud to get to the front of the house.
Thanks, Ed.
We need to sit down. She needs to come in and sit down and let's go over this.
I believe already submitted something like this. Is it not the same as to what I've submitted?
I don't know. Has Ed looked at it?
Tom does residential, so I haven't looked at it.
I believe she was seeking planning commission approval for the expansion prior to trying to obtain a building permit.
So now you have, you have approval to, to do it. You just need to get with building inspection, get your permit in and show them how you're going to lay it out and then go from there.
If you would just provide a, a sketch floor plan of what you're wanting to do to Tom and with your building permit application, he'll work you through it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Under other 2301 Mill Creek Manor Extension Request by ESI.
Thank you. Jason Havil with ESI. Here requesting one year extension for the approved large scale from Mill Creek. Any questions?
Are you guys finished hauling red dirt out of there?
I'm not sure. I know the pads up to, up, up to grade. They're working on the parking lot. They put retaining walls. They're working on utilities. I'm not sure if there's any exterior grading that needs to be done to haul in or out. As far as the mass excavation side of things.
We're, we're done doing that?
Yes.
Okay. And do we have all the landscaping worked out?
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I have to meet, I need to get hold of one of their inspectors because they've got the sewer line laid out. I've just been busy and haven't had a chance to get with him to go out there so we can discuss what trees and if any need to be replaced and all.
Because the, the way it was approved, that if you have to take trees out, you would replace them. We need to make sure that all of that gets identified as we move forward. Okay? Okay. This is a motion to extend.
This would be a, a motion for an extension continuation?[1693.12]